Trustees meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And roll call.
Ermling, here. Feeny.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
I know.
He said he would try, but might not make it.
White.
Here.
Zhong.
Zhong said he'd be a little bit late.
I thought I saw him just winging by the door.
Oh, he's, he said he was gonna be right really close.
Sagami.
Here.
Public comments. Nate, anything on social media? Can both their hand up? Anybody publicly wanna talk? Seeing that there's none, we'll move through to minutes from the previous meetings. Number four, six twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Board of trustees meeting. Move to approve items four, five, and six. Move by, move by Nate, second by Hushain. Anything on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Reports minutes from the boards, committees, and commissions. Only the blue, correct?
Okay.
So, eleven.
Move to acknowledge items eleven, thirteen, and fifteen.
Second. The motion by White, second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Reports, seven departments, number twenty administrator. Anything you wanna add, or?
Nothing really to add, just to remind the board of trustees of tomorrow evening's groundbreaking ceremony. We didn't necessarily widely advertise it, but we're hoping that we have, you know, things there. And that starts at five P M. I'm sure if anybody's in Madison, they know that clearing has been taking place. And I know that there's probably shock value involved in how much is cleared. Unfortunately, the way that the site has been designed, there's really not a lot of trees that are gonna be saved other than along the southern boundary there, especially the southwest corner. And a little bit on the southeast corner. The one property that, or two properties in between, actually. There had been some mowing done onto the site that we now own. So that was all noted during property acquisition or property purchase. So we have to do one more final walkthrough with the contractor tomorrow out there to just verify what's gonna be saved. At least along the perimeter of the building project per se. Have not been successful in getting ahold of Raleigh Lockery on his proposed project. And we've had apparently some staff transition from his financial staff. And I was only, I was only able to leave my message today. I guess aside from that, we talked a little bit about the status of CDB contract. We're gonna have another update meeting with the city of Wausau and County Mountain this Thursday to see where the, where the city of Wausau's contract stands. So I hope that'll be on our next village board agenda in August. Yeah, I guess really that's all I have unless you have any questions for me right now.
I've got a real important one that I have been asked several times. Seeing as we are cutting all those beautiful trees down, are we gonna at least sell them?
Under the terms of the contract, the clearing of the site, fate of the materials is, was part of the, was indicated in the contract to be responsibility of the contractor. So any costs associated with clearing wood value, whatever it may be, is factored into their bids.
Well, that's kind of what I, I, I said I thought it was, but I thought, well, I'd better ask before I tell it too many times.
Right.
But I laughed, that was, that was the biggest question I had.
Well, there was some dirt being moved. And I kinda got in the middle of it with my bar fight mad mentality. You know, I, my mouth was moving faster than my brain. And got into quite a discussion with PGA. And, but, you know, Keith took care of it. And our, all of our contacts should be strictly with Myron. Obviously through, you know, Keith, Hushain is our, kind of our spokesperson with the board. He's gonna be attending all the meetings, he'll be involved. But yeah, that's, that was a tough one for me 'cause I thought that was our earth and we could do what we wanted with that earth. And I didn't realize that was inside the contract. The only issue that day was they were three weeks ahead of time. And so we didn't know about it until one of our inspectors saw it. It was just quite a thing to see. And so I, I kinda drove there and kinda lost it a little bit. But it's all handled now. Hushain.
That usually the logger take all the logs. And he give it this call to his current track. And the logger usually sends it to the paper company in this law court closer one to him or whoever, you know, has contract. But that's the standard procedure for these projects. And we did talk about saving the trees. I would say we had a long discussion over that saving trees. And the agreement was they're gonna mark the property line. We know on the south side, we wanna save some to protect those labor in there. But at the same time, we're gonna walk around the perimeter. If there's any tree is not in the footprint of the building, we can save that, we'll save it. We put the ribbon around it, they're gonna save it. Also, there is a section for future development. I talked to Keith, I'm not sure we should clear cut that area or not, but I'll leave it up to the, to the project contracts.
We're not clearing like that area we're referencing as those two duplex lots that were there that were added onto the site.
Right, yeah.
You have to remember, there's a, there's a fence going around the perimeter of the site.
Right.
So that's a discussion for tomorrow probably, I guess. If those trees are left right along the boundary line, that's gonna interfere. It's where the fence is placed. I don't know if you want, we can talk about that tomorrow, but.
But the fence gonna sit usually six inch inside the property.
So yeah, unfortunately though, if you have trees nearby, that's gonna probably interfere.
It has to go where it has to go.
Pressure. So, okay. Anyway, okay.
Um, thank you, cause that, that's it, I, thank you.
Uh, just, just a quick question, Keith, on the last primary report. So Village of Weston staff inspected that individual's driveway?
Building.
Building.
It had nothing to do with the driveway permit.
Oh, okay.
Driveway permit was issued by the village of Corona Order.
Okay.
We, we contract with Corona Order for building inspection services.
Okay. And I assume that their, their building is in the Village of Weston?
No, it's not, no, it's not.
Oh, okay.
For contract inspection.
Okay.
Right. We, we contract our inspectors to assist Corona Order. Okay. Uh, clerk, twenty-one.
I don't have anything to add to my report, but I do have an item at the end of the agenda.
What?
I have an item at the end of the agenda for discussion.
Uh, twenty-two, finance for Jessica. Anything more, Jessica?
Nothing to add.
Any question?
If you want to see anything special during this budget segment, help me prepare this.
Uh, twenty-three, fire and EMS, man.
I have nothing spectacular to add.
Anybody wanna ask any questions? Um, we, we noted that he was at, is in the meeting now?
Yes, I got that.
Okay, thank you.
I got it.
Okay. Uh, Parker and Rec, nothing on Parker and Rec, but?
I did not have a report in the packet, but there are a couple items of notes that I can bring up. Um, I did receive confirmation from the CBB and the West Area Rugby today that they are not holding their event at Kennedy Park that was planned the end of the month. They failed to inform us that they were canceling it. I know that was an event that was gonna be partially funded by the CBB, but it wasn't fun, so.
Ten thousand.
So I'm assuming that just stays there 'cause they're not holding the event now.
Um, I, did we pay it? I believe we paid it. And I got a call two weeks ago that they're gonna return it. So, uh, from Nick Oak, Oakford from the CBB.
Oakford, Oakford, yeah, okay. Yeah, I hadn't heard it, heard it, so I touched base with them just to try to see what was going on. Because when I talked to Nick here a month ago, five weeks ago, they were planning on submitting a permit at that point.
Yeah, and we're gonna.
Special event permit.
We're gonna have to probably put some kind of caveat on that, on those funds that it has to be used for a purpose or returned. We, we did cut that ten thousand hour check for the rugby.
Remember we don't.
Or the CBB did, or whoever, oh, CBB whatever, yeah.
We don't know until we get their report.
So we'll, we'll have to dig into that a little bit more.
Okay. Staff did complete the railing down on the Brooklyn entrance to the Oakdale River Trail
Okay.
last week, so that's all done. Um, and this week we'll be focusing on the public safety landscape installation.
Okay.
So landscape plants are expected to arrive tomorrow with trees coming probably the next day. And there, all the rest of the materials we have already ready to go. Um, so we have a couple staff working over there today. And then we'll have a few more probably the remainder of the week to help get that project done, so.
Does that, does that take care of David, Jim Fields? Question, remember he wrote us?
Oh, yeah, Dave, gentlemen, yes.
Gentlemen, I mean, okay, thank you.
Percy, he has a question.
I'm sorry, no worries. Um, I was waiting for you to finish. Uh, yeah, the question is for Director Oscar. Um, did the CBB express why they weren't hosting that, that, that rugby tournament at all at the end of the month here?
They did not. Like I said, they've been really not upfront with us about the event. Um, I sent them the special event permit back in March and they never completed it. Um, and I touched base with Nick when he was here, five, six weeks ago, whatever it was. He's like, I'll, I'll talk to Jake and make sure he gets sent in. And that's pretty much the limited interaction I had with them. I knew a little bit more about the event going on just because the Crohn's business, Everest Party Rentals was supposed to play the tents. And I had talked to Steve probably a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. And as far as he knew at that point, it was still on, but that they were gonna downsize it. So I don't know if they were not able to get the rugby groups here to participate in the matches they were gonna hold or if it was part of the live entertainment or just, you know, what it was exactly.
I, I reached out to him too and, and he was a little bit more than that 'cause he said there was gonna be no tents. And he was waiting to understand what was all happening. But I just needed somebody to verify that what I was hearing was the same thing.
Yep.
But, um, planning and development, is Jen on?
I think she was, she said she was gonna try to be online.
Jen, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add. I am here if you have any questions later on.
You're louder and more clear than when you are here in person.
Am I really?
Yes, yes, sounds really good, actually, yes, thank you. Anything for Jen and/or for plan?
I have a question.
Yes, Hushain.
Jen, you said there is some webinar, when is those webinars start?
The webinars?
Uh, for the planning training, right?
Right, for the planning commission, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they have them all throughout, throughout the year. I can forward them. They, they tend to do them in the spring more so. So they may start up a few after, like in the fall. They don't do a lot during the summer.
Yeah, Hushain probably didn't get those links like the, the rest of the commission did.
Oh, yeah, I'll send him that.
Yeah, as an alternate now, because I still have those. I, I know the rest of our commission does too. Thank you, Jen.
Actually, I CC'd the board, but I'll go find the email and send it to him again.
Okay.
Could you also see if I can get credit for it?
Credit for it.
Like an award or a trophy or something, I think. No, I'm just teasing. No, I, I know what you, I know what you mean.
For your certification, Hushain?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, um, I'll check into that, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if they do that, but I'll, I'll check it.
Great, if they don't, they don't, that's okay.
Okay, I'll check into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, police, twenty-seven.
Uh, real quickly, we had fifteen hundred and seventy-three calls for service in the month of June. Of those, eleven hundred and fifty were in the village. Been busy, a lot of welfare checks, mental health and drug complaints have been kind of the priority as it has been most of the summer. Personnel, we have two vacancies. Uh, we are interviewing a, a candidate Wednesday that has a good resume, that I don't see very many of those anymore. So we're excited to see how he interviews. And I wanted to publicly thank who's ever responsible for putting attention to the safety building, whether it's Sean or Michael or Keith, the board. It's nice that they're gonna get some landscaping and, um, could definitely, so we're, we're appreciative.
Michael last week before I let one on vacation. There's, there's quite a bit of stuff that's still gonna happen.
It's on the agenda tonight.
But do a little bit more talking and, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, it's looking good, yeah. Anything else for Chief Schultz, anybody? Uh, Public Works, Michael from Florida, are you on?
He's not on.
I know, I'm just teasing.
You said it's gonna be difficult for me to get on.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's fine.
Everybody noted the barrels on Ross Avenue today, right? So detour sign.
Uh, no detour signs, no. I was coming to this meeting and there's no detour signs. I was trying to sneak through.
I see the detour.
And I got, I got chewed away.
Schofield Avenue has detour signs.
Oh, Schofield, I, I thought you meant Ross, somebody said Ross.
Well, since Ross Avenue detours, I'm trying to hit people going.
I'm coming across the bridge, coming around the corner, and I'm gonna sneak through a little bit to get on Mesker, and nope. And, uh.
Did you go on phone?
Huh? No, I, just the one before. I, I got, I kinda got chased out of there, so I kept my, my windows up. Anyway, all good. Uh, twenty-nine, technology, Nate? Oh, I'm sorry, hold it, hold it.
You know what's scheduled for that Ross Avenue, how long it's gonna hit?
Uh, I talked to Dan briefly today and what he said, it would be a
He, he had a.
Week, yeah, didn't he have that in his email?
He had it in his email and for the life of me, I did not look at it that carefully.
I did, I can't remember, that's why, so.
And then from there, from there to the bridge, and then they're also gonna do the bridge resurfacing too. But they'll keep one lane open. So, yeah. Okay, uh, technology, Nate, now it's your turn.
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay, anything for Nate? Thanks for doing my computer, appreciate that. Uh, Work Product Transmittals, number thirty, June building permits.
Moves to acknowledge items thirty and thirty-one.
A motion to acknowledge by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermling for thirty and thirty-one. Uh, any more on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, a consent agenda. Any requests to pull items out of the consent for consideration? Or you wanna?
Approve items thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five on the consent agenda.
Second, motion by White to approve and second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Ordinances, number thirty-seven, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero one nine. An ordinance amending section ninety-four point four point ten, temporary land uses types. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zhong.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thirty-eight, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two one. An ordinance to approve the rezoning of a parcel of land from B two, highway business to D D, planned development located at fifty-six oh three and fifty-six oh one, Business Highway fifty-one, Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin. Project number two zero two, one zero two, zero nine.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two one, a rezone request for fifty-six oh three Business Highway fifty-one and fifty-six oh one Business Highway fifty-one per planning, land commission recommendation.
Second. Motion by White, second by Zhong. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thirty-nine, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two two. An ordinance to amend section eighty-six point four, one oh five, point one oh five, connections to village sewage collection system.
I move to approve the revisions to sanitary sewer ordinance.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Hushain. Sagami? Any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number forty, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two three. An ordinance to amend section seventy-eight point one one eight, determination, determination, yep, of assessment cost for new street and curb and gutter construction and section seventy-eight point one two three, assessment paid by installments. Your pleasure?
I move to approve revisions to the special assessment ordinance as presented.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Sagami. Any more on the discussion? Uh, yes.
There was some discussion about how long they could defer this, about whether it was appropriate to defer it twenty years or ten years. Has that issue been settled?
Uh, that was actually part of a previous ordinance.
Yes, we'll withdraw my question.
But it was left to board discretion. Up, up, it was up, it was the furlough of sanitary sewer connection for ten years.
Right.
Or longer, as language say. Um, except in instances where the village board's approved deferring connection longer than ten years.
Right, that's under one B.
So the discretion is, you know, still rests with the village board on that.
So unless we make a stilly doing. Unless we have a, we wanna make changes, it's ten years.
And then ten years to pay.
Depending on how we structure that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Forty-one, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero two four. An ordinance to amend section A two point five oh four, designation of ATV slash UTV routes.
Just have a comment on this. I, I'm wondering when we're gonna stop getting these requests to extend ATV routes, I mean.
But why don't we, why don't we see if it gets on the floor?
Okay, fair play, we'll defer.
Defer?
I will.
To the discussion, okay. Is there anyone that wants to put this up for motion?
Uh-oh.
Uh, by Sagami, second by Feeny, on the discussion.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm learning from you.
Pardon?
I'm learning from you.
I have a problem, because we're getting these requests on a regular basis. What's to stop me and my subdivision from wanting to connect the trail? Why aren't we just throwing it open to the entire village? I realize it's, I realize it's in the southern, it's in the more rural areas, but.
Well, it's also on the, on the borders.
Fringe areas.
But go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I think we're, not by anybody's fault, but the village is behind in the movement of ATV routes. Uh, every municipality north of here, everything's wide open. Right, it's just, whether you, I don't agree with it or not, but that's been.
I don't, from my law enforcement experience.
So we haven't had issues that I'm aware of, but if you've watched the news, there are, I think there are double or triple fatalities now with UTVs and ATVs. But I don't have an issue with it until it becomes an issue and then I'll let you know.
But, but by then we might have approved more routes and then it's an issue and then how do we?
I bring it back to the board.
Well, um, Barb?
Well, I guess, seeing as this is going right past my house.
I was wondering why you weren't at the meeting.
I had other issues.
Okay.
But, and I guess in the most part, I probably don't really care. Except this came about because I got phone calls from the neighbors. Because this gentleman and some of his other neighbors there had ATV and they were racing it up and down that road. And they had little kids riding it up and down the road. And the one neighbor lady was so mad, she called me and she said they had been out there and, uh, she had friends over and they were racing back and forth and running around that they could not even visit out in their yard because it was so noisy. And then I had other ones that, that called. And I finally did call Everest Metro and I did just talk to one and said, what can I do? Or what can I tell them to do? I don't, you know, and I don't know if somebody talked to them or whatever, but all of a sudden they quit racing up and down. They also at one point had one of those little go-karts that they were doing the same thing. So I'm a little bit concerned about the person that is requesting this. Not the fact, I mean, I would kinda like maybe sometimes to take my ATV and UTV and take it down the road. I could get to Ringo, to my hunting land.
And you have one?
Oh, sure.
Golly.
Awesome.
Well, if, if it gets a little crazy, you know, for the police, then they're gonna be able to go places that they can't go with their explorers, so.
Well, I, I mean, I just guess asking here, is this that he can drive down the road and get to the trails and get where he wants to go? Or does he wanna be running up and down the road? There's a difference.
The way, the way that it was discussed at Public Works is they just want that part to be used for trail access.
Yeah, okay. Not racing up and down, going down and turning around and on Callan and coming back and.
No.
And I'm.
Okay, can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Chief, has there been any large, specific problems in regards to us opening this up at all? I mean, Barb's not racing down there or anything, is she?
She's.
I mean, now I, I can hop on my UTV and just take it right out to Ringo.
No, it's been, it's been open in Ringo for a couple years and I was very, I'm like, this is gonna be a disaster. And they're, they're, they go slow and I, it's not an issue, to my surprise.
Like I said, that with this, if I don't have an issue with it.
They're gonna get away from you and then rip around away from your house.
Yes.
Is what I think is gonna happen. They're probably done better.
I, I had the same reservations years ago when I was up working in Merrill. And I mean, since then, I, I, you know, you share the road with them on some of the roads. I'll bet four or five employees come to work every day with those. It used to be kind of a, a thing that you, you bring it to kinda brag and show off, like just like your snowmobile. Now it's every day and it's, it's no problem.
One neighbor that complains, 'cause now you can ride a scooter down the road?
Yeah.
One.
Okay.
I don't know.
Like a electric scooter?
I don't know what it.
We're still in discussion, yeah, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, you had something?
I was just gonna say, I don't think the ordinance restricts it to access to the trail though. It's just, it says this is an ATV route, right?
Yeah.
So if that, that becomes a concern, then we'd have to maybe consider provisions to the ordinance.
You know, like I said, if he just drives from his house and drives down the road to go to his trails, but if they just figure that's a, now we can drive it up and down the road, that's another issue.
I recall when this first started, it was, the original intent was to allow homeowners to get access to the trail and/or to get, for people that were on the trail to get to gas stations or places to eat. It wasn't necessarily as a, a track for them to go back and forth and back and forth.
And then, even, even with snowmobiles, from time to time, you have that issue. I mean, ninety, ninety-nine point nine nine percent of the people are going to use it, right? But a couple times every year, there's just going to be some, someone that decides that they want to turn it into their personal race yard. And to, to an earlier point, how do we stop these from, um, from being, or from these requests to, uh, to continue to come up? I would love to see some sort of, um, village-wide ATV route uh, through selected parts of the village. But I realize that that would be a multi-year, uh, project. But I think that it could be a real boon to, um, to local businesses, uh, especially restaurants and bars.
It's if you're not supposed to drink when you're driving here.
Well, neither a car or, or a.
True.
Or a snowmobile or a.
And they're going for a.
In response, a, a lot of the northern communities depend upon tourism.
Exactly.
We are not dependent upon tourism, as far as I can recall.
Right, but it, it would be a very nice boon.
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, they crossed the Mesker and that damage that blacked out. I don't know how often you change that. I know at least last year you replaced that black.
But snowmobiles?
They have snowmobiles, they got the spikes on there, yeah.
Cleats.
The carbide cut to the blacktop.
A lot of areas up north have cement in there, very heavy cement on a lot of those crossings. Yeah, and a coating, yep. Okay, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So carry. Aye, no?
No.
Okay, how many nos, two?
Two.
Did you catch that, Cherry?
Yes.
So we still have the majority. Um, resolution number forty, resolutions number forty-two. Resolution number two zero two one dash two one. A resolution to approve the final plat of the inner spring. Resolution number two zero two one dash two one, a resolution to approve the final plat of the Hinner Springs.
Move to approve resolution twenty, twenty-one dash three two one, a resolution to approve the final plat of Hinner Springs subdivision per planning commission recommendation.
Motion by White, second by Feeny, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry forty-three, unfinished business forty-three, update on American Rescue Plan ARPA funds. Um, I, I put this on here, uh, I got word last week and I confirmed that, um, the city of Schofield earmarked, didn't, didn't do anything with it, but earmarked. Ten percent of their funds, uh, to the EMPD and ten percent of their funds to Riverside Fire. Um, I understand that the village, the town of Weston also did the same thing. Uh, the town of Weston did ten percent of their funds towards the EMPD and ten percent of their funds towards Safer. And, uh, I, I believe we should act in the same manner. Um, I don't know what we're gonna do with our funds or if we can with our funds or whatever we can with our funds. I think it changes daily or weekly or monthly, what this all does. But if there's a possibility to do that, um, you know, anything we think that we're gonna do with these funds, it's gonna be village-wide. And EMPD and Safer would be village-wide.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, how much would, uh, so it would be ten percent to, um, to EMPD and then ten percent to Safer? Um, how much would that be each? Just, was that about two point six million total?
Yes, it's about two hundred thousand each.
So it'd be about a little over two hundred thousand per, and then eighty percent would be left at, you know, like Keith, uh, sees, uh, you know, possible broadband, possible, uh, Public Works, uh.
Right now, where, um, water would be.
Wells. A well, yep, yep. So, just, just a follow-up, so that would, it would be a total, um, so it would be a total of four hundred thousand dollars then, am I?
More.
Just before I want to do the, um, okay, just wanted, just wanted to see the numbers.
It's not, it's, it's not designed at this point to actually pay it out. It's, once we understand what we can actually do with this money, I, I, because I think it's still up in the air, isn't it?
So every webinar I have attended does not just allow you to blanket funds for a government service, except for the amount of revenue loss. So if I would say, if the board would say, we want to give ten percent of our revenue loss to Safer and ten percent to our metro, that'd be about forty thousand. For the revenue loss. The revenue loss is the amount of funds that we have flexibility with.
Um, the other ones, there's a lot less flexibility.
Um, there is nothing where it says you can use it for general government service such as policing or fire if you have a specific purpose, um. They're not intended for that, always leave it like that. I have not found where they're intended for that. There are people stretching it to the limits. Um, just as a reminder, the village of Weston, because of the amount of funds that we receive, we will be undergoing a single audit. That means our deep, our expenditures are gonna be looking at, looked at in detail by our auditor. They are gonna be reporting to the federal government what they found during their audit. And that's something we need to be really careful of, make sure we pass with fine colors because if we don't pass this. And if another infrastructure bill comes through, we may not get that because we didn't treat these funds properly. So that's something we just need to be very careful of.
Uh, question Director Troutman, uh, so, uh, providing premium pay for essential workers, um, does that include, um, cash bounties or cash bonuses?
Yes, it does. There is such thing as hazard pay and it is eligible for those who are directly related to the COVID response.
Okay, and President Maloney, um, with Schofield and Rothschild pledging ten percent, Schofield and the town of Weston, right? I, I'm not sure what Red Mountain, I've got a feeler out.
I, I don't think that the town allocated ten, they, when I talked to Mel, they haven't come up with a specific number, so.
Okay. I, and I have not gotten nothing back from Red Mountain or Rothschild yet.
Okay.
I just wanted to see what the area communities were doing.
Sure.
And, uh, Mayor Rosenberg too.
But did, um, did the town of Weston and Schofield, um, was, uh, cash bonuses part of that ten percent? Or was that strictly, um, or was that strictly, uh, upgrading existing vehicles and infrastructure and?
Right now, it's just strictly earmarked.
Okay.
It's all it is, it's, it's, if, if they spend the money, they want to just hold back ten percent for each of those agencies. And not, not earmark all hundred percent to a project or whatever they can. They just, in case they can, they want to have it there so that they can.
Okay.
Put it that way. I'm sorry, Barb?
Well, I guess.
Then you.
I, I probably wouldn't have a problem, except I want to make sure that it's legal. I mean, it's not, it's not in the gray area.
Well, I, it's not that they're paying, and, and I, I think there's a little misunderstanding here. They're earmarking the funds if they can. So that it doesn't all get spent on, on a project that is. If, 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 as time goes and as things change and more things come out that Jessica finds or Keith finds. Um, they want to just have it there kind of in reserve. That's what they're doing. They're not gonna spend it, they don't have something to spend it on, but they want to earmark it for those two agencies.
I guess I would like to know what it's, would be used.
Yep.
Or not just.
They don't know, they don't know what it's gonna be used for, but they're earmarking the funds, that's all they're doing.
So.
Uh, Yi was next.
Yeah, I do, I'm just, uh, just to go, I, I, I agree with, uh, Trustee Emily as well too. Um, I'm not against this, I want to make sure that we're consistent with the policies, uh, and also make sure that, uh, also find out what that money would be used for, you know, especially. Uh, that's the first step. The second step here is, I guess, if, um, you know, I'm just wanting, as you mentioned as well, President Maloney here, just trying to figuring out what our neighbors are doing as well too. Um, with that, I wouldn't be comfortable setting a certain percentage yet. I would say that I would be supportive of looking towards, you know, earmarking some, uh, portion of this part. I just wouldn't be comfortable setting an actual percentage yet until we get that clarified.
Okay, um, Keith?
Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, our decision that's to spend these funds, but they actually have, we have until twenty twenty-four to spend.
Yes.
Everything, everything. We don't have any deadline on even spending the first half, right?
No.
So, I guess there is some time. I know we just received something related from the league. They had the issue with, uh, the, or the US Treasury brought some interim final. And. I didn't sign this.
We could.
Yes, quite. Well, it's still in process as we're hearing, as we're talking, discussing this.
So is in, is, uh, interim final sort of like double secret probation?
Pretty much.
Um.
He did this in the safety, he will write all the time with things too, so.
Um, President Maloney, I agree with you in principle, um, but I would like us to at least have a conversation about, um, cash bonuses to Safer and Everest Metro. Because as, um, as tough as the pandemic was, uh, was and still is on everyone, policing never stopped, uh, fire never stopped. And, uh, EMS never stopped.
Correct. Correct, they, they were never, never had the ability to work from home. I, I guess my concern here, and, and I don't know if I'm coming across right or not, other communities have earmarked, that's it, earmarked. My concern is, is all the scuttlebutt I hear from this village, on all the talking points that I hear, none of it includes our two safety divisions.
So the finance department was very conscious of our safety divisions. Last year, we gave over a hundred thousand dollars to Everest Metro. That's not spread, I mean, we didn't get a good job, we didn't get a thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That was doing our duty, is making sure that, that we using the funds that we had available to help everyone.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to remind everyone, I don't know, I don't, City of Schofield nor the town of Weston made the effort to do that.
Mm-hmm.
The one, the village remarked.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good.
I mean.
I mean, we, we just have a responsibility to all our departments, so thank you for reminding us of that.
Yeah, well, I guess at some point I wouldn't have a problem with us looking at and seeing what, you know, but to, to say allocate an exact amount or say we are going. I guess I would like it more as this is something we would.
I, I'm fine with the question, I'm not, it says action under, I just wanted it to be, like it says, possible. Discussing it is fine, we can put it on two or three months from now, that's fine.
Just like we all had.
Yep, white, Lauren?
I, I think, um, as far as I understand, one, uh, the things that overtime related to, um, first responders like EMS, fire and PD. I mean, I think we need to take a look at the end of the year to see where both Safer and the Metro are, if, how far they are over on their overtime. That would give us a better figure as far as maybe we might want to contribute towards your overtime. Because that's my understanding of it. I know I've read through it many times and every time I read through it, it comes from different.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have a problem, but I think I'm looking more towards a, what did, what expenses were incurred rather than, here's a quarter million dollars, but.
Just another follow-up, Mr. President, um, I guess the other question would be for us to continue this discussion with Chief Savage and also Chief Schultz as well too. To see where they would want, if we did allocate something over, what they would want to see that money go towards. Um, I, I, I don't know if you, I, I don't know if the good chief has provided input into this at all, but what they could potentially use this, you know, portion of this funding for as well too. So, um, I have, uh, I, I, like I said, I think we should probably continue this discussion moving forward here. Not against it, not opposing it, but I just want us to, uh, continue having discussions about them.
I agree.
I'll be honest, I don't know enough about it to, to say, well, I'd love to, I, I mean, our, our overtime budget at Safer is, is blown for the year, it just is. Um, and, uh, you know, so that would be one thing. Um, I don't know if you could put that towards capital equipment, if that takes some of the ease off from the capital equipment, because I, I gotta tell you, there's a matter truck that's falling apart that needs to be replaced, that's a big ticket item. So, you know, to me, that would, that would make sense, um, but I, I, off the top of my head, I, 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 I have no idea.
But we're, we're gonna, the village is gonna rely on Jessica's team as far as where it can go.
Well, it's not like overtime, it's, it's premium pay. So what you would do is look at their wages and say, okay, we're gonna, they make ten dollars an hour, we're gonna pay them an additional five dollars an hour for this timeframe, for their hazard pay. It's, so CARES was different than ARPA. ARPA is for that benefit and it's the, the whole thing with ARPA, it's like, they are encouraging to donate these funds to a local agency, including your own. But for those premium pays, for those people that had to work during the pandemic, so those directly related to essential workers. Like, the village could say, okay, we chose Pick and Save, we want to give a grant to Pick and Save to pay those workers that were working during the pandemic an extra wage. And that's part of what's in the ARPA interim final guidance. Um, that type of language, that type of talk, it is also for public safety, but it's for the premium pay, not to cover your expenses. CARES was to cover our expenses for the additional costs.
So that's, that's why there's a confusion around this, in one hand you can, in the other hand you can't, it's like splitting hairs, it's like.
Just to answer your point, uh, Pick and Save Kroger did, so across the board they did, uh, so did Trigg. So almost every grocery store I know paid more and are still paying more or paying bonuses per month just to stay on, uh, cheap?
Well, there is language in there about, um, bringing your staff back to pre-pandemic forms that you're forgetting about, also to add staff. But there is some language that ties it to gun violence, but I think to your point, I, I mean, there was an updated FAQ thing today and I think some of that language is changing, so. I don't know how they're gonna regulate all these funds because there is, I've heard rumors too of people using it for locally, for things they're not supposed to, but. So there is stuff about funding positions, pre-pandemic and adding staff. Um, but it is, the language now talks about adding a proportionally to your increased gun violence due to health emergency, but.
Well, we definitely, with this discussion, we definitely, I believe we're all more educated.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that was a good point, and, uh, we can move on. Keith, did you have something?
I was just gonna say, I, you know, the, the bullet point is where there's premium pay for essential workers. Because they're servicing critical research or sectors, you know, uh, you know, there may be other areas of the operation that might be qualifying, that's not cutting out anybody. And we're still trying to define and trying to figure out how it's best to spend, nothing would be spent, you know, without this being discussed at the board level and seeing where it goes. And there's, there are, oh, it works operations and utility operations that kept half their staff home for, you know, alternating weeks. We didn't do anything like that.
We didn't.
So, in most cases, they continue to pay their people while they're not here. And I think, I think that may have happened with a couple of local communities as well, so. We don't have that same situation to be able to go back to because we felt we could keep people separated. So, you know, whether some of this qual, you know, qualifies in terms of, you know, some of our other areas of operation, I don't know. And hopefully we're looking at all the different options I guess that we have.
Good. I think we, um, talked, worked very good about it. Uh, with nothing else, um, can we just leave that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, new business forty-four, contract with credit, thanks for every, all the input, by the way.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
You leave it, are we gonna bring it back again to the board?
Oh, I think Jessica.
Agenda.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right, thank you. Uh, new business, good question. Uh, number forty-four, contract with credit management control, what's your pleasure?
Move to authorize staff to enter into a contract with credit management control on a first gift trace, uh, per, uh, finance committee recommendation.
Uh, motion by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Um, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry forty-five, Apache Lane Construction Contract Order.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami, second, second by Feeny, any more in the discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Money.
You work out all the difference in there, right, Keith? Because there was significant difference between the contractors?
Right, and I know there was a recommendation or, or a letter from an engineer, I think the main, or the main issues was the boring, the cost of boring the river. And, uh, I think that was the biggest area of discrepancy between even the pre, the pre-borrowing estimate and, uh, and the current bid. Um, our, the engineer didn't give an opinion of probable, probable cost or an estimate prior to bid opening and, you know, that was even quite a bit higher than the original staff estimate. I think the main area again where that was not recognized was that boring of the, of the river. And we even talked about possibly rebidding, but we're in a time when I think there's gonna be a lot more pressure on contractors, the costs are just gonna go up. And I don't think it's gonna benefit us to, to rebid this project.
So, and somebody, somebody, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Somebody talked to this contractor, said to make sure he didn't make a mistake?
Yes.
Make a claim later on, a mis, a misstep?
Yes, that's a question I think, I know that had taken place prior to the Public Works meeting last week.
So does your motion include, uh, Advanced Construction Incorporated for a bid amount of two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents?
Yes.
Okay, and the second is?
Yep.
Nate, uh, any more in the discussion? And, uh, clerk, do you caught that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, for forty-six, Crestwood Acres Construction Contract Change Order Number Two.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, due to conflict of interest, Alex used when I sell for items forty-six and forty-seven.
Okay.
Trustee Feeny, you can sit in the audience.
I don't.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve change order number two on Crestwood Acres subdivision utility reconstruct a project to Switlaken Sons at fifty-nine thousand, five seventy-three point zero zero.
Motion by White.
Second.
Second by Emily. Um, any more in the discussion?
On the question.
I think.
Establishes unit costs for items contained in the, uh, change order. Um, so if there are differences in the quantities, that, that number will.
Bless it.
Be subject to change.
Okay. Yes?
Is it just extra to the contract because of the road and everything else in there?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not addition or whatever, it is addition, but it's not anything doing anything wrong in the contract or whatever, so.
So we're asking that they do something different.
Yes.
Right. And just to follow up on that, so there was a recommendation prior, as is, um, pointed out in the, uh, staff report. Due to taking, removing a sidewalk, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of cost has been.
Reclaimed?
Before, you know, change order, there's no change order issued because there's gonna be like a zero or a minimal number there, if there's any. Uh, so this area or this particular change order would be trying to adding some of that cost back in, so it doesn't appear it's gonna be going over estimate or over budget.
I think for, if we're removing anything from the contract, regardless of the cost of it, there should be a change order. Just for the record, we can say and then we're gonna remove two hundred feet of the sidewalk at zero cost to the project. And no change in the cost estimate of the project, but still should be a change order.
Sure, I agree. So there should be another change order just indicating. I think it was maybe a little bit up in the air as to whether there was gonna be any sidewalk at the back going into last meeting.
Right, right.
Or going to the public works meeting last Monday. So that's why.
Hear that?
Well, I forgot, I already two motions or.
Yeah.
Change. No, I just just explaining.
Okay, okay. So we're still on forty-six.
Just the record keeping.
Okay.
Even if there is no change in the cost, still the issue that just for a record keeping to make sure.
So forty-six motion by White, second by Hermling. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried forty-seven Crestwood Acres Design Contract Change Order Number One.
Move to prove change order number one on the Crest Crestwood Acres Subdivision Utility Reconstructor Project Douglas Lane redesign. Do a ECOM not to exceed three thousand nine hundred dollars, second.
Uh, motion by White, second by Zone. Anything on the discussion? Good job, by the way, on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I don't know, I didn't know if that was ever a good finish on Douglas.
Oh.
That's fantastic. Uh, forty-eight, uh, let the record state that Mr. Feeny has rejoined the club. Uh, forty-eight Municipal Center Materials Testing Contract.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Zone. All uh, here, anyone on the discussion? I'm sorry. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, number forty-nine Westview Boulevard Repaving and Concrete Repair Construction Contract.
Move toward the Westview Boulevard Repaving and Concrete Repair Construction Contract to Pember Companies Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion by White. Second, second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? This is up in uh. Valders, right?
This is um.
Westview?
This is by the store.
Oh.
And uh, going in that in that area by.
Okay, they're doing curbing also, is that part of the intersection uh, up by Valders Springs?
No, the Valdery Springs and Concrete Work in on Barbicon is a separate project.
Okay, all right.
Addressed and.
Uh, that was the wrong discussion, though.
Just a quick question here, I guess I'm kind of curious as to how um, we ended up in the situation here with us being um. Uh, you know, budgeting for it to be two hundred thousand, yet it's being three over three hundred seven, is it because of construction costs or is there any other? I I guess uh, something that came in that would cause it to be so so overpriced. I'm just kind of curious as to how we got to the situation here.
Um, I don't.
I think it was a a really rough estimate when it was thrown in there, um, because it's TIF. Um, it's not of the most important budget number, you know, because adequate time spent on it.
Oh, I think if, yeah, I mean, not to, you're, I think, yeah, you're on the right track. The problem is when we do CIP budgeting. You're trying to do an estimate of a project based on a very rough estimate, you know, you're looking at a length of street. If you drop all the details of how much curve is actually involved or is this, is this going farther? Um, I guess we could certainly uh. Go back and look at this, I guess, without.
Those funds that we did not borrow for, I said, just give me a quick number. And that's because we don't spend a lot of time on the budget. Yes, sir, we give you.
Same thing happens with our CIP budget, unfortunately, I mean, we're still basing.
Well, CIP we spent a little bit more time on, but TIF, um, during that time with all the other budgets coming to a head. Um, the TIF is the one that we spent the least amount of time on.
I guess the only other comment I have is, I guess we, I I would like.
Okay, Daddy, do you have a pound dish?
Uh, I I would like for our administration, administration state, who's that?
Michael just tried it, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, I I would have the pool. Go ahead, I'm sorry. No worries, I I would just like administration to kind of review this again, so that I I I it's over a hu- a hundred thousand dollars over what we have estimated here, and I'm. I'm glad it's uh, uh, in a way here that's TIF rather than our CIP, but as administrator, Donna mentioned that we have the same problem with CIP as well too, so. Um, if we can reevaluate this as well too, in the future, we'd be greatly appreciative.
Could I speak at all?
Yeah, like, who's that? Who's that, Michael? No, that's not.
No, this is Dan Raskowski, I'm the person that.
Oh, okay.
That developed the plan to put it together. The numbers that came in on this job are are very similar to what the contractors are charging us for Barbicon Avenue. The problem with this piece of road is that it was built in a couple of different stages. If you would go and drive from Camp Phillips Road. And go on Westview Boulevard heading west towards Cheryl Tire. The concrete sections and the curbing on the north side, the curb on the north side, the whole works is shot, we've got to take it out completely. I don't know if that was considered. The slabs are to the point where if we try and do a concrete repair on the westbound lanes. We're gonna, it's gonna cost us more than just to rip most of it out. So the scope of the project basically is from Camp Phillips Road going west. We're gonna save the concrete, well, we're gonna replace the concrete off of Camp Phillips Road to the end of the turn radiuses. I've talked to Wisconsin DOT, that's a typical. Um, road, the the a road plan for anything that's gonna in the future be carrying the traffic that this road could receive. On the eastbound lanes, if you would go and drive it from Cheryl Tire coming back towards Camp Phillips. That was built at a different time, and the problem with that is the concrete is only seven and a half inches thick and the slabs were not dulled together on the joints. So the joints are what's called faulted, which means that every time you go over it, you can hear the tire slap. There's no good way to fix that. The one positive out of it is uh, the village put about twenty thousand dollars into concrete repair when you're going eastbound coming up to Highway X. We're gonna save that and and tie that in with the approach to County Highway X. The other slabs that are bad then. Going to the west, we're gonna remove completely and replace with asphalt, which is gonna be considerably cheaper than replacing it with concrete. We're also looking at taking the the pedestrian trail going two hundred and forty feet to the south, it's cracked up so bad. That we're gonna take it out and we're gonna end up paving it with asphalt. I understand your concerns about the pricing on it. But right now, the pricing, the unit pricing that we received for this job is right in line with what Barbicon Avenue is costing us. Um, I don't see the prices going down, and there is no other good way to fix this road. I I don't think you can cut a hundred thousand dollars off of this without closing two lanes and only having a two lane road going in and out of there. There's just no way to do it, so I understand your concern with the CIP number, but. I I put a lot of time into measuring everything on here and coming up with quantities and. And and I think it's in the ballpark. Um, if you'd want to discuss it more in depth, uh, we could meet sometime and I could show you the numbers upfront on what everything is, the unit pricing.
Yes, go ahead, Dee. Um, the concern I have is not with the project itself, the concern I have is with the process. Because if it was gonna cost the same as Barbicon, why was the CIP number not at the same amount that the Barbicon um, street uh, avenue was budgeted at? Uh, that's just my concerns here. Um, I I like I said, I just want, I I have a concern with the process, the budgeting as well, that is specifically not the project itself.
Yeah, I think I can try to answer that one.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the CIP budget goes. You know, we we do our best to put these together and. It's probably was, you know, eighteen months, twenty months ago when we first put those estimates together on these projects and. One thing we found out, especially in the last nine months, is um, construction costs in general have have gone up fairly fairly significantly in some areas. Um, Dan mentioned even on Westview Boulevard, our first thought was putting it all back as concrete. When we looked at being able to do that. I mean, we're we're probably would be looking at a four hundred thousand dollar, you know, project instead of the two fifty or so we're at, so. You know, so we switched it to making it more of an asphalt road, just to try to, you know, reduce the cost on that. Um. So I guess just trying to get the. You know, as far as the process goes, you know, we develop an estimate that so that we can create a budget. And then market factors start factoring into, and I I guess maybe that's something we need to look at moving forward is. How do we, how do we adjust these um, estimates, our budgets, you know, monthly or, you know, quarterly as we start seeing different trends, but. You know, we also didn't do a project for about five, six years there in the middle, so trying to get uh. A better grasp on just the pavement costs, the curb and gutter repairs, um, those items, you know, we didn't have a uh. I guess a lot of historic knowledge or experience on. Seeing those trends, but even, you know, looking at uh, a project we bid in May versus a project we bid in June, you know. Different unit prices all of a sudden are a lot different, so.
Well, and we wouldn't be having this discussion if it was a hundred thousand dollars less. The CIP is hard to manage. And uh, six, seven, eight months ago, we had a similar issue with some equipment. And uh, but yet, when you look at the whole CIP project on that equipment buy, we were still lower, so some were high, some were lower. Um, you know, and you do the best you can, so uh, I drive that that Camp Phillips into, you know, the tire area there to get back to that hospital quite often. And it is, it's horrendous. I know that's not your point. Your point is the the higher amount from the CIP. Um, yes, or estimate, but that's where we are. Some sometimes we get really close, sometimes we're below, sometimes we're higher.
And some of our CIP, I know they go over it every year, but sometimes our CIP estimates are three to four years old too.
Right, right. And even even if they're not, I have an instance happened to me where. The only con or the lowest contract that came back was a third over. All of the estimates were three months old. And it just so happened that contractors decided, well, thirty-three percent increase in the prices just invited, so Keith?
So I was just, yeah, I. Going back to my experiences, public works director, we had a lot of project activity. Trying to put those estimates together on a CIP project when you're two years out or three years out. And they don't know all the final quantities, actual stuff that's gonna be in the bid, that ultimately ends up being a discrepancy in the. Bid versus what was estimated in that CIP, and as Mark, uh, President of Lonnie pointed out. There are other places on the CIP where things end up balancing out. I think for in terms of the process, we need to update it annually. Whatever it is, whether it's in our TIB or in our um, for our just our general CIP overall. Uh, just to kind of revisit where we are, and it it does get done again as we get ready to bid, but. Um, I don't know that there's ever gonna be a perfect way to do this, I guess it'd be the message.
But I just wanna, I just wanna add that when I first started off this question, I asked for clarification as to why it was over a hundred thousand, I did point out. If it was in regards to construction increases, and the answers that I'm hearing is not consistent, you know, I hear, I hear. Uh, I hear Mi- uh, Michael saying, uh, saying that it was because of construction, I'm hearing Jessica saying that it's because uh, this was a little time taken to it, um. So I I'm not trying to say that, you know, I'm not trying to say that there's um, other things going around here, but I'm, and I I completely understand the CIP is more of a estimation, estimating it, and I. Definitely think that it's construction costs that potentially could have a impact on the increase on it, but as I mentioned here, I just wanted to see for us to review our process here and make sure that. Um, there's a way we can improve it as well.
Yeah, and yeah, I guess I'm not sure what Jessica had to say before that, but um. I I guess it's.
This was the the fund that I said, give me a number, I'm gonna put it in, it doesn't really matter so much, so this, that's. Basically why I said that Michael is very good, I guess, the calculations in doing that, but this one, I kind of pinned him on, I said, if you want it. It was a last minute, you gotta prove it to use the TIF funds to do road projects at the last minute. Right before the budget started, I said, just give me a number, we gotta get it, we gotta get it approved, the CIP. That was adopted was done at a different time than this, this uh, general governmental fund budget, so. That's what we put it in, it wasn't part of our CIP five-year plan. Um, that's why I gave you the answer I did.
Yeah, and.
Are feeling that way on CIP, but this one was an exception, it was something I needed to get done and in there and done.
Yeah, I think staff is setting up on this one.
Yeah, um, just remind me, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion by.
Okay. My question.
Good, just can I just, I just know.
Sure.
Who?
Motion by White, second by Feeny.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Michael, was the engineering estimate on this beside yourself?
No, we're, we did this one all in-house, Husheng.
Oh, everything in-house, okay.
Correct.
Okay, then what I suggest is for next project, you gotta up. Review your estimate and change it if this has to be changed. I wouldn't go with the old estimate unless you did that.
Yep, no, and like Jessica was alluding to, she she asked me for a quick number, I looked at some historic data. You know, shot a number over to her quickly, so without really reviewing the entire scope of the the work, I suppose.
All right.
Hearing no, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So we have one no, uh, by trustee Zone. Um, motion was approved. Uh, number fifty, appointment to East Nick Ad hoc Committee, three village trustees. Uh, we brought this back from the last meeting, right?
We did.
Okay.
If I can just.
Yeah, go, uh, well, let's, who do you want?
Oh, go ahead.
Him or you?
Trustee.
Go ahead.
I I have a feeling in your uh, administrative report, you talk about Corona owners no longer interested in participating, so. Are are we gonna do this project on our own?
Based on what I heard from them, that would be the only option that we would consider doing this on our own now. I don't know if it's the case where maybe the chief elected officials would like to discuss something, I'm not sure, I know Mr. Downey. Um, said that was quite a long discussion. They've talked about it a couple of times there. Um, so I, I don't know what we want to do. We could certainly. Initiate our committee, we could also refer to public works and have more discussion there as well, instead of. Instead of appointing people as committee.
Well, my my thoughts, if I was gonna have a say, it's obviously the board's say, but. I would have, if we were gonna have three on there, I would have thought Lauren and Husheng, and then it's the board's discretion on the third one. I would rather not be on that committee, so. That that's just my point, if we have an ad hoc, if we just pursue this further. Um, we've had positive thoughts about it, I think even you, um, Lauren for sure on the safety issue.
Well, it does, and I I realize that one of the meetings, it was brought out that we have many streets that have only one way in and out, that's true, I mean. My point of the issue is that we have actually three municipalities, four municipalities involved in here, and three don't want to participate, and only one does.
And if and if that's the case, I mean, so we, you know, technically it goes to a certain point, and I think. Uh, parkers are back there, uh, four-wheelers are back there. Would it behoove us just to not put some kind of a, you know, after the last house? Couldn't we just put some kind of a a iron road restriction? I mean, there's nowhere else to go.
Because you can't restrict access to private property, there's people that own property further to the.
Yeah, I I I'm just saying, uh, people that don't own property up there, that are up there browsing and whatever.
True, but you would have to give a key to every property owner to go through that gate.
Yeah, true.
Right.
Why, uh, why did the Village of Corona Water say no? Well, I think there was something involved, and I I shouldn't speak for you, but I thought there was something that could have benefited Corona Water at first. And now I don't think the benefit is there, right?
Right, well, there, my, the feedback I received was that. Because the proposal is coming relative to some potential development, and actually I know there is a. We were contacted by Wisconsin Public Service about extending service to one of the properties in Weston. And uh, Corona Water's viewing that as, okay, this is gonna help growth in Weston, but not in Corona Water, yet. The initial discussion about development down there was from that. That grandiose development proposal from a guy named Ambrose Grochek.
Yep.
Who was gonna put in a residential subdivision and adult course on the south side of Nick, East Nick Avenue. That's nothing new, this been around for a while or.
Yeah.
There's been a couple of things that were, that keep springing up and then go away.
But there's also a desire on the part of the developer here, um. Gary Gert and Kurt Soibert to propose or approach the Village of Corona Water for a. Non-metallic mining permit on property in the Village of Corona Water, but that takes a conditional use permit, which they're not guaranteed to get. So we wouldn't entertain that. While in East Nick, in fact, we haven't restricted him, but you know, for wait. Um, year round, actually. Um. Yeah, so the logical thing to do would be to connect that out to a J, so I. Guess again, Corona Water is kind of looking at it, I think. My opinion, very, um.
but not very open-mindedly, um.
Well, they, they may be looking at it that it may go through anyway, so will benefit. And we may take the, the, the thought that we won't have to pay, but yet we'll benefit. Same with Reed and Ringel. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine if we don't. I'm fine.
One missed, excuse me, one missed that. How much, how many, uh, what's the distance? From where they're gonna do metal, non-metallic mining to the J?
That's, it's, it's that last large forty, so it's less, it's about a half a mile, give or take, not quite.
Okay.
Yeah, if it is forty, that's a twelve hundred and fifty feet, I would say quarter mile.
I think it's, uh, it's one of those forties or those, that edge, end of, um, the Polish Lancer base where they had to make a correction for a, for a line of longitude or something. So it's a longer distance than, than standard forty-eight.
So from the, from his question, from the metallic mine back to the west, how long of a distance is that?
Um, thinking that's about, must think three and a half miles.
I'd say it's more than two miles.
So when, when it, instead of punching this whole thing through, why don't we just punch it from J over?
It has to be J.
That's it, and then dead end.
More economical.
And then dead end, and done. That's if we do it, if we do.
Okay, but what benefit is Weston getting out of this? Because if the, well, the mine, I wouldn't consider an asset to begin with, but if the mining is going to be in Cronin Water and that's the heavy loads, what is Weston getting out of this?
Well, we're gonna be responsible, I guess, to the point about can we put a gate across the street? No, we can't.
No, you can't.
Generally, once we've opened up a street, we're, we have to maintain, it has to be maintained. Um, and the problem is we have this, it's like every other, it's like every street on the border between another neighboring community. We, we don't have any written agreements on these things. We should have some kind of a written agreement that says we're responsible, we're taking responsibility for the, for any capital costs on each side. Uh, we did that when Cronin Water built two or three houses on the south side. Back in twenty twelve, were there abouts? And, you know.
We're a bit off from.
We didn't kick back at them, yet now, now, you know, of course, the board has changed. I'm sure that changed in makeup and they don't remember all, what all went on. But in the end, we take responsibility for maintaining this part of East Nick. They take what we call what's West Nick, I guess, if you extend both, farther to the west of like Pine, Huron and Pine Street or Pine Avenue.
Yeah, but, okay, I understand Nick, but Nick doesn't go, it ends, does it not?
Does right now.
Currently, yes.
Currently, well, what, so if we don't do anything more, nobody is going to be driving it because there's no road there. We don't have to maintain anything that isn't there.
If there is a road and if there's a building permit request, then we.
Well, where is there the road?
Pardon?
If Nick ends there, where is the road?
It's about a quarter mile further to the west is where it curves and goes back to the north. That's, and that's at Comete, you're talking about Cometic. Right.
Cause that's a muddy mess.
So, so wait a minute, you're saying that if somebody takes a building permit on a, on a non-ruined area, we are, well, if we give the permit.
It's a.
If we don't give the permit.
But the street is open.
What?
It's open.
Nick is open.
Yes.
Not open to J?
To the village boundary essentially.
But.
Your own?
Cause.
Well, we don't necessarily plow it right now, but if somebody gets a permit out there.
Well, here's the thing, if Cronin Water is backing up, there won't be any metallic mining in there.
Right, that's.
They're not.
We don't know what.
Backing up not to give the permit.
True.
So if there's no metallic mining in there, the only thing we gotta deal with that is that subdivision will be developed.
We'll be responsible, but this, there's a, there's gonna be, anticipating a building permit's gonna be coming to us now because of the sales and property there. And the inquiry of public service to get service extended.
Are we getting a little off? Cause right now, we're only on the agenda for appointments.
We just wanna do an ad hoc.
Right, so do we, do we want the appointments or do we not? Let's just go there.
Perhaps this is the topic to be taken up by the ad hoc committee. You're probably right.
Do we wanna create an ad hoc committee so that they can take up this discussion?
We already have a resolution creating the committee.
Correct, yes.
Right.
So these, this would be the appointment of the members to the committee.
Yep, I, I don't see a resolution appointing the committee in the package.
That's not a special meeting.
Yeah.
Didn't have that special meeting on the twenty-ninth. I think you were absent.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to clarify, so what to, uh, they're right, uh, cause originally the intention of this ad hoc committee was to have other members from other, um, uh.
At first.
At first. So do we wanna change, you know, change the makeup of the resolution first prior to voting on it? Or do you want it to just be?
Depends upon how much weight we give this ad hoc committee, because this ad hoc committee could be instructing us to spend dollars. And by holding it to the three village trustees, you are also gonna be spending the dollars. If we bring in outside people, it's like, no, I, I don't know what you're talking about, two, four, no idea. I just, I just think about that, because then how much weight does the ad hoc committee push to us and then do we deny? I mean, we could.
Be recommend, recommend.
Maybe a recommendation, go ahead.
But I, I guess, if Cronin Water, Ringel and Reed.
Yeah.
None of them are going to participate. So why do we need an ad hoc committee?
That, yeah, that's just what I was going to say. We don't.
I mean, because I thought the ad hoc committee was gonna be working.
With the other municipalities.
But if we're not, if they're not gonna, they're telling us they're not gonna come, you know, then why do we need an ad hoc committee to look at what engineers and, and I, I'm sorry, I guess.
Your thoughts are, is it stalled with Richard Downey and, and staff? And you're thinking maybe, uh, a trustee position should talk to, uh, a village?
Yeah, I don't know that we've gotten to that level.
Oh, okay.
So I think we would, that would be a, that would be one other follow-up on this, just to see. Um, you know, maybe Richard and, which presidents wanna get, you know, the two administrators and the two presidents might wanna get together just to have a discussion about.
Why don't we go that route before we do this?
Well, yeah, cause I, I just don't find a reason for an ad hoc committee.
I agree, I agree.
Um, I'll move to defer, uh, the appointment of the East Nick Ad hoc Committee pending further discussion.
I, I think that, cause I don't, I don't wanna pin it down on a date.
I agree.
Second, okay, motion by White to defer to, uh, undisclosed date, seconded by Feeny. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, number fifty-two, discussion on exterior appearance, uh.
Number fifty-one.
Uh, fifty-one.
Renaming.
Oh, hey, yes. Oh, wow, I had that crossed off already. Discussion on renaming a street in the Village of Weston. So I, I had this put on here. Um, I had the name of the street on here too, and I, I felt a little sensitive to it, so I called Sherry and I said, you know, I don't think we need to name the street. And even though somebody wants to listen to this or hear this, that's fine. Um, I just think, uh, we need to take care of Schofield Avenue. I think we do, and, and I, I know that, and I, I've talked to others about it. And I, I know there was a, a time when I wasn't on the board. Um, I heard Stefan Hagen, I heard all kinds of things. Uh, you know, Weston would be the right one, but we already have one, so instead of changing two. My thoughts, and I've been thinking about this, uh, you know, last week I, I did talk to somebody else on the board. Um, just because we're together at a meeting, but my thoughts, I don't think we have a village, a village avenue. Um, I think the biggest thing we've always heard back was the, the businesses, you know, uh, talking and, 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 you know, how much it costs us. Maybe we apply a little bit of money to help them. I don't mean a lot, but just a little bit, a little incentive to kind of, hmm, a little token, perfect. Um, I, I just, I just don't think, I, I, I don't wanna offend Schofield, okay? But in, in our town days, you know, we had Schofield zip code, uh, you know, it was Schofield, Schofield, Schofield. And, and it kinda still is now. Um, I, I, I did a couple of things about a month ago and I called area businesses. And, and I, I'd rather not name, I'm going to name this one, but I called Court Dentistry. Okay, right, right on, you know, Schofield Avenue. And I said, I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, changing, uh, dentist, um, and I just wanna, uh, just confirm where you're located. She gave me the address, uh, on Schofield Avenue in Schofield. And I says, just, you know, whereabouts are you? I, I certainly know where they are. But I just kind of wanted to play, uh, at, you know, somebody that didn't know. And she gave me some other buildings and I said, whoa, I said, that's the Village of Weston. Uh, no, no, we're in Schofield. I says, no, excuse me. I says, I, I am positive that you're in the Village of Weston. She goes, sir, uh, we have Schofield Avenue running right in front of us. I know we're in Schofield. Okay, so I, I'm just telling you, alright, now, if, if some of you that have been here a while, you know, Mayor Sarah Campke, rest her soul, she's passed away, has cut in at least two ribbons at Ace Hardware. At least two. That's in the Village of Weston, always has been in the Village of Weston. But Mayor Tippel has gone to, uh, Red Mountain when those big box stores opened up. And he's cut many ribbons out there because it's a Wassa address.
Postal.
It's a postal, that's correct, it's postal. And, um, I, I just don't think we can tell our story with Schofield Avenue running through here. Now, it, it wouldn't matter if it was Schofield, you know, great neighbors, you know, we work with them, a lot of different things. I, I hope they're not offended. Um, but Schofield Avenue ends right at Walgreens, then Grand Avenue continues. Um, Business Fifty-One goes out to the west. Um, what's the road that goes now, uh, that never used to be, it used to always be a T?
Metro Drive.
Metro Drive goes there. So I just think we, we need to take this on. I, I just, I don't think this, especially this road, this is a huge road, was, it was twenty-nine. It was called Bloody Twenty-Nine. Uh, you, you can also call it JJ, you know? Um, I think we've talked about Grand Avenue just continuing. But I think we need, if, if it's separate now, I think it should be Village Road or something else.
Bull Falls Road.
Ah, Bull Falls, that's a Harley-Davidson shop, so.
Mr. President, I just want clarification as to how you came to Village Road, or you know, Village Road or?
Um, I actually want Weston Road, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna switch a whole group of people on a Weston and then move that one to Village. Village is, cause we are a village.
There's a Village Way in Cronin Water.
Uh, what's that?
There's a Village Way in Cronin Water.
Yeah, so I mean, and I'm dancing around Village, uh, Avenue, Village Boulevard. I'm all over the board. I, I, I even talked, thought about in my, you made a comment probably two years ago, that if we have an opportunity to have a monk, you know, a monk name or monk ancestry name. Um, I, I believe, uh, I, I, I agree with you. I think this road though, I think Village is the right one. We're a village now. We're not gonna change. We're not gonna go to city status. So, I'm sorry.
Bill?
What?
Westonville?
That's a long one, you know, and then, okay, so are you on Weston Avenue or Westonville Avenue? You know what I mean?
Well, you know, the, uh, I mean, morning view is not that much longer either, so I, I wouldn't be against that as well. No, I just want a clarification, um, as to how you came to that, to that, uh, maybe that is.
Just because we're a village.
It's part of our. No, I, I understand. Part of who we are. You know, the only reason, the only reason why I thought that if it was just Village, it would then, I mean, Village Rothschild's a village as well too.
Yep.
We were to name, gonna rename that, cause obviously Schofield Avenue has a huge impact and it's very, it's basically the busiest one in the Village of Weston.
Yes.
It should be something that, um, strictly identifies, uh, the Village of Weston. So that's what I'm alluding to.
Yeah, this is discussion only today. I'm seating all of you. And, uh, um, I, I hope we don't, Nate?
Jennifer Higgins, Ezra Andrews.
Jennifer Higgins, what do you got for us? It's not gonna be Lake Buttermore either.
What?
Not gonna be Lake Buttermore either, or no, no, no.
Oh.
Where, where's?
Um, I just.
Funville?
No, it's.
Where's she at? Lake to Bay.
Lake to Bay, yeah, it can't be Lake to Bay, so sorry. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to give a little bit of history. I had talked to Keith about this on, before I left. Um, and I was at a meeting in Schofield when we were talking about the, um, going with the Marathon County Addressing Change, and we actually had approached them about changing the name road, the, the name of the road. That's where the Grand Avenue came up. Um, I don't remember exactly why it didn't go any further. If it was because we weren't participating in the, the county addressing change, or if it was that Schofield just didn't wanna deal with it, I don't remember, and I didn't get a chance to look further in on that. Um, one thing I do wanna bring up is that we always try not to duplicate names. The county is trying not to have that. Um, and I just looked up real quick. Um, Lauren was right, there's a Village Way, um, in Cronin Water and in Rothschild. And then there's a Village Road in Cronin Water, a Village Road in Plover, the town of Plover, and a Village Lane in the town of Bivent, so, um.
Why, my, my, another first choice for me was Everest, but we have an Everest Boulevard and an East Everest. And an East, you know, better, you know, one, so, I mean, you know what, we can just sit with it, we can talk about it. We can, maybe something that's gonna hit somebody. Um, what I would suggest though, if anyone thinks that we should have it go out to the public, since we didn't have the, the municipal building go out to the public, I don't, ask them to help rename the street.
They would, they would need some history books.
And we should send a questionnaire, part of the newsletter and ask them.
Yeah, and that's great.
There is a little slight problem with it because, um, Schofield Avenue, I think, is actually, goes a little bit into Schofield. Um, because of the way that the road changes, so Grand Avenue actually stops.
At Business Avenue Fifty-One.
At the, at the bridge, and then it kinda turns and goes down in front of the lawyer's office down there along, and, and then it goes actually out into Rothschild. And then, um, Schofield Avenue, there's a, a short portion before you get, you know, in between the log cabin and where that lawyer's.
Let's, let's bring Schofield into this and just flip-flop. We'll be Grand and they'll be Schofield.
Uh, we tried that. If you want me to look up and see what actually stopped it, I don't remember. I know Dan Verjean was at the meeting. He was on the council at the time. Um, I just didn't have a chance.
Go up to that corner.
Is this a legality issue? No.
No, cause I actually think we had talked to Rothschild. Um, George Peterson was involved too.
You know.
Because it actually goes in, into their.
This will be a bite, this will be a bite, but I think it's something that the village should do. I mean, we, we need, we need to start telling our story, you know, I mean, it's been twenty-five years. You know, that's kind of what spurred me to think, you know, the, you know, we, we talked about the, the village wire. Um, you know, that is, are we too late to kind of celebrate the twenty-five? Absolutely not. You know, it's, it's actually just a few months away that, that it became twenty-five years to be village status. And, uh, so are we gonna be sitting here twenty, I mean, there's a lot of confusion out there with Schofield Avenue. Why would Schofield Avenue go through here? And, and it's not offensive to talk about this because it could be just, it could be Cronin Water, it could be Rothschild, it could be anybody, it could be Ringel, so.
Well, I've been fighting about that for years.
The pioneer's name is, well, we show, actually Schofield.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, I, I don't wanna get, you know, into a back and forth with another neighboring community. We, we wanna get along, we wanna be nice, but it, it makes sense to take ownership of that name. And maybe this is just discussion. I mean, we're on record pace right now. I don't wanna stall this too much more. So I mean, if we actually get home by eight o'clock, eight fifteen, this would be incredible, but anyway.
Just a comment.
Yep, yeah, go ahead.
Miss Warren, we don't tell them what to do, what to name their street or, I don't think they should be offended if you wanna change the name in the village.
Right.
I mean, uh, it is what it is, that's what we wanna do and.
It's our priority.
Sorry, if, if somebody get offended, that's too bad. They should.
It'll be over eventually after two or three generations.
It, it will, well, hopefully it's not that long, but, you know, I, I just, um, you know, and maybe Village isn't the right one, you know, that.
That's.
There's enough villages out there that.
Is there?
It would top.
Westville? Is it named Westville?
Well, you know, you, you, you sure have some long ones there. I mean, it's hard enough to pronounce.
How about the Great White Way?
Yeah, or how about one, two, three, you know, avenue. And then, is it a boulevard? I think it's an avenue. Avenue sounds faster. Uh, since you brought it up, President Maloney, I would actually throw, uh, throw out, uh, Stefan Hagan Avenue. Um, I, I disagree, yeah.
And what if, what if?
And you certainly contoured out there. I'm sorry, I don't wanna stifle you.
What about if we, you know, um, what, what year did they go with the village incorporate?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
So if we were to do like ninety, and ninety-six Avenue or nineteen ninety-six Avenue, I don't know, something along the lines there, is that too confusing, confusing just?
That makes me think of the old ninety-six year from the.
I, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there, so.
I, I actually don't mind that one, but written out, ninety-six, ninety-six Avenue.
But that.
You know, that sounds like New York, it's kinda cool, you know, like it's a big tall buildings there.
But isn't there something about numbers and, and whatnot all the grid?
Thejen would know about that, they'd ask.
Why don't we leave it at that? Why don't we just leave it as a seed? That's kinda all I wanted to do, just kinda talk about it, just think about it. But I think, I do believe we should tackle it. I really do.
Well, I can.
I think it's true.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I've said that before.
How about, I think, one more meeting and have a fifteen minutes, twenty minutes or half an hour discussion.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of that discussion, we have to make a decision. So we're not gonna drag it that.
Now, now, and talk to people that you run into, talk to whoever you wanna talk into, you know, so.
And talk.
So I, I think of, I think of that one business here, um, on, uh, who I frequent way too often is the Schofield Avenue, uh, on the corner of, uh, is it Schofield Deli?
What is it called? Schofield Oriental Market.
Yep, and I, and I, I've always wanted to ask, are you naming this, which why? Because of the avenue? I would think because of the avenue, stay avenue. Yeah, it's not because they think they're in Schofield, they know they're in Weston. I mean, they're talking to Jen about possibly going over into Lane Northwest. You know, I think they were about a year ago. So, but, but I mean, we get three or four or five more businesses like that. Now, that's a monster change. You know, now they could still be Schofield, you know, Oriental, uh, grocery or restaurant, but egg rolls are by, by far, there's nothing better than those egg rolls.
I mean, I used to be, had such a thing about, matter of fact, my sister's friend kinda laughed because, she said, did I offend her by calling Weston Schofield? Cuz I really, you know.
Well, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of.
A business one time that I, I called him like you, kept insisting they were in Schofield. And I said, well, I guess if you don't know where you are, neither do I, and I, I didn't go there, but.
Well.
And then one time I asked a store, a grocery store, and they insisted they were in Schofield because that's where their mail comes from.
Yep.
And they kept going and going, and I said, okay, I'm gonna ask you a question. Who issues you your liquor license? Where do you pay your taxes?
One time a year they get it, you know, but, but throughout the year, I mean, everyone knows the school district, right? You know, so, I mean, sometimes I, I wonder if we should all be called Everest, and I know you brought it up too, so, okay, the seed.
Everest Avenue.
The seed, what's that?
Uh, DC Everest Avenue. He's a pioneer in the area.
Oh. Yeah, but isn't that too close there? Well, okay, we're just gonna talk about it, let's see what, what happens next month. Uh, talk about it, we'll put it back on the agenda and see, uh, so next month, I would say discussion and possible action.
Right.
Okay, to see, now, should this, I know, I know, I asked to have this on the, on the, our Village Agenda here, Board Agenda. Should I have this go on somewhere else? Are we gonna offend anybody? Any committee? I don't think so either. Okay, I think you would've said something to me.
The only one that might possibly have some input would be Plan Commission maybe.
Okay, yeah, well, Jen, you're involved. She gave us quite a bit to say, so, okay. All right, um.
You should give us some names that we could meet.
Yeah, why not?
She has a bunch of names that when we were gonna go through the uniform addressing, where we had.
Yeah, I have a seventy-one page list from the county of things we can't use.
Okay, that's fine, that, we need to know what we can't use too. Okay.
Thanks, Jen.
So enough on that, uh, now fifty-two, discussion on exterior appearance at public safety building and possible improvements. So that again is another one of mine, since, um, for some reason I thought this would be a short meeting. Um, uh, being on the Safer Board, okay, last Tuesday, we had a meeting. Um, I know I'm always, you know, looking at that safety building, it's, it's a very beautiful building, but one thing I saw when I walked out that I, I was actually out in the parking lot talking to Josh, is, um, you know, cuz I, I asked about Safer, you know, that we have nothing on our building that says Safer. And they said, you know, actually, uh, one of the battalion chiefs was there, Eric, I think. Uh, you were, you were not there that night, but excused. And he said, yeah, it's, it's a shame we just have this small little sign over here in, on the Weston Safety Building. So I went outside thinking I'm gonna see Safer everywhere, and I drove around the building, it's nowhere, nowhere. It's a Rip Mountain Safety Building, or, you know, then it says Fire EMS and Rescue up above the doors. Beautiful building. I also noticed about seven different wall wash lights. Warm LED, cool, you name the color, there's a different bulb in almost all ten of the, of, nothing at all. I talked to Josh, Josh says it drives him nuts too, he's gonna talk to somebody. I come over here, I see the same thing. I see cool lights, warm lights, all different lights, but talking to Michael, we have a wall wash coming for this building yet. That's gonna, and two poles, so two outside poles and then a wall wash for all the doors. Um, I understand there's about twenty-seven thousand dollars earmarked for painting it. Um, in, in my mind, we've gotta take a look at this building. Uh, I think the green is misplaced, I think the green Weston building sign out there is from the seventies. Uh, it does not complement what's going on at that building. Um, I, I think we need to look at some reds over on the fire side, some blues on the left side. Uh, what a shame, you know, that we had to repaint all those brand new doors that came in green inside that building to a steel gray that they should've been, but somebody decided that it should be green. All those canopies over all the doors are green. It, it's, it's not, it's just not the look. Um, one of the most recognizable fired buildings I've seen is in Greenville. And if you drive by that, it's got a lot of glass, which I would not push, but I'm telling you, with the brick, they use red. Uh, there's no reason we can't paint that bottom brick, it does not have to look that cream, it still looks like Bears Beverage because they played with the red for Budweiser. Uh, the top is in a white, the white and the cream conflict, I'm sorry, I got a little flair in me, I can't help it. But, um, I see, what do we got here? We got five doors in Weston, we got five doors on each side of Rip Mountain. And on the Safer Board, we've got two of us here, I would propose that Safer would be written on those five doors. S, a big S, a big A, F, and an E and an R. And I think we need to tell our story that we are in a combined, uh, um, rescue unit, safety, you know, Safer with Rip Mountain. Period. I mean, that's a, that's a big deal that we're not telling the rest of these communities. And the EMPD is with two other ones, Schofield and the town of Weston. And, and that story is not being told over there, you know, yes, we own it as Weston, yes, we take care of it, yes, we snowplow and, and grass cut. But, um, those are two monumental deals that are done that aren't, that aren't everywhere else in this, in these areas. There's not a whole lot of joint ventures, and we have, we're enjoying two of them, two different ones. Now, I know Schofield's with Riverside, but who's to say someday that we don't, you know, combine those two departments? Who's, who's to say that we don't combine EMPD with Rothschild? Possibly Roths, uh, uh, Croninwater, possibly Safer, we bring Mozini in, we don't know. So I'm kinda, you know, on a little stick here, but I, I think we need to look at some colors and not just paint it the same old, same old, I think Kushein is gonna sign a.
Are we talking about the building over there?
Yes, yep.
Why couldn't you get the architect to look at it and give us some idea?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dovetail here because I happened to come in and sign some papers this weekend, and I saw some boxes, I, I thought they were donuts, but they weren't, in the, um, I'm just kidding, of course, uh, in the conference room. And, uh, there's some tile.
Color samples.
Yeah. Who, who is picking those colors?
Well, architect has specified them, he needs to review them, but, I'll go get them.
No, 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 leave them, God knows, we don't need more people looking at these colors. But what I'm saying is, I'm saying is, uh, we should have somebody here professionally with a color palette with that fifteen, sixteen, seventeen million dollar building that's gonna last us fifty or sixty years.
Interior designer.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, I have heard no one ever talk about these colors in this room. And I have been very gracious not to comment on these colors in this room, but this is, this is unbelievable, these colors.
Can I know, I think if I remember, we talked about it, the architect, he said he's gonna send it over here and we were gonna bring it to the board.
Oh, I would love it if it came to the board.
It's a matter of what.
But are we, are we professional enough? Do we have the flair for color?
Well, I think when we talk about it, we come to some conclusion. It, architect is not gonna just watch us and let us mess it up. He's gonna put his two cents in there also and share with us his opinion.
We're talking about John.
Why he's suggesting different things, the way he suggests.
We're talking about John Kenny, right?
John.
Kuni, oh, excuse me, Kenny Architect.
He's actually one of his associates.
Okay, because I underestimated him through this whole process, and he was very, very good at what he did to get this to where we are today. So I hope they have somebody on board that can throw some color. Yi?
So I was just gonna ask you, so from my understanding, we don't have any expert or anybody that's really looking at that. I'm assuming that, um, our architecture does have individuals interior design. Uh, cuz I, I was also gonna recommend that I do know somebody that would be willing, that, I'm sure she would be willing to donate her time as well, to help as well. Um, she does a lot of, um, interior designing for governmental buildings and also, uh, police and sheriff's department throughout the whole Midwest as well too. So I, I was gonna see if she would be willing to help contribute some ideas as well, if that's the route we wanna.
Well, let's see how much is behind Kenny, cuz we're already paying for that, you know, but, but, you know, it's just, it, it just scared me a little bit that we don't have any, you know, any colors unless John is gonna recommend some colors over here.
Cuz they'll be using so many samples, color samples for any of the elements of the building that we would have an option.
Safety or municipal?
Municipal. For the municipal.
I, I don't think any of us are qualified, and so.
That's going back to what I was saying, if it was just for the public sa- safety building, I, I could see if she would be willing to help contribute somehow, volunteer her time as well too, to help provide some ideas as well too, just, my thoughts, just an offer out there.
I, I don't know what we have on the safety building, but if we have nothing there, I mean, to be honest, that's a nice offer. What?
There are no signs other than the monument one that sits in the front.
There's a green sign. Right, Weston, and it's, and it's green, and then it matches all the other greens all over.
Reason that color is there is because it was the original color, it was cheaper to paint the building the same color than to change the color.
I know cheaper isn't always long term.
I, I understand that, but that's the philosophy many, many years ago.
Yeah. So, uh, one, um, one thing I'd like to see is have some staff, uh, input into it, like get, get a limited tray from, from Kuni. Let staff pick out some color schemes that they like, since they're going to be the ones that are going to be living, working in there, and it'll help, uh, provide some sense of ownership. Uh, and then you're completely right about the, about the public safety building. We, uh, we got nothing, and that's gotta change.
Well, I believe this board comes and goes. Committees come and go, and, you know, we, we do have long-term employees here, but employees come and go. This building's gonna be around, we're saying fifty or sixty years. And, uh, I, I think it gets a little dangerous with some, you know, and now I got my color, but you didn't get your color, you know, what, blah, 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 you know. So I, I, if we have somebody that's professional on that architect team, I think we should see what they're gonna propose, and hopefully we all enjoy it. Yi, did you have to hand up? No, you did, okay, go ahead.
Instead of just bringing a sample, say, would you like this color, this color? I would like to see what that looks, what it actually on the building. Can I get a picture of what this looks like?
To see those two big, you know, deals there, they're completely opposite if they're the same deal. I would like to see a color rendition too. The color renditions aren't always exact, but they're very.
But you get.
And you see the harmony of colors come in.
And then to have it professional.
Yep, you have something? Oh, no, no, or Kushein, I'm sorry.
I think with the size of his company, he may have an interior designer in there.
And that's what Keith was saying.
And also, I think that last time we talked about it, he said he's gonna send variety of the sample.
Mm-hmm.
Let us take a look at it. We asked what the brick, he said, yes, is what was the brick look like. So, he's not gonna just let us pick up something bad or whatever, because he got his signature all over the building.
It's a beautiful building, and, and I always heard earth tones is what I always heard, so.
I think there is certain color, especially with the, with the, with the outside. Those are three, four color rail wood. And one of them probably is similar to DC Everest.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's a green color.
Yeah.
A lot of people use that color. So I think we can take a look at it, at the same time, we can ask him tomorrow morning, see if he got interior design person in his staff to help us all with the interior work of the building, and I think they can contribute significantly.
Okay. Hey, the only question I had, uh, for Chief Schultz, not, not as much you, Matt, but is there any thought that we don't want to bring attention to a police department? Uh, hopefully, okay, good, because I, I, I certainly don't either. Um, and I hope this is a passing event, what this country's going through right now. Um, but I, and then that's why when I go by at night, there's just no lights on. I think we have two wall wash lights and that's it, maybe one or two underneath the doors, and I think we gotta light that baby up.
And we've had some creepers sitting in the parking lot.
Yep, I, I, you know, that's what, that's what bothers me about this gasoline over here too, so, go ahead.
I think we should have architect take a look at the exterior of that building.
Right.
I'm serious about it, I think he can do wonders to it.
Well, they're still involved, you know, talking to Michael, he's got, there's other things that are still happening there that I wanted to question on.
It, it, it will cost some money.
Yep.
To do that, but I think he can make it look really nice.
Yeah, it's, it's a beautiful, it's beautiful, the landscaping is coming together really nice. Um, I, I saw the other day that they had, uh, must've, uh, uh, gassed the grass because it's dying next to building, but they're coming in with a whole landscape feature with some rock and some different things, so I thought, oh my gosh, it's gonna be just really nice, so, anyway. All right. Uh, there's another one for, uh, keeping this ten minutes longer, um, but, so we'll, you're gonna handle that, Keith, right?
Yes.
Laughing with me or at me?
No, just your, your comment.
All right, thank you, I'm just.
I think the ten minutes, I guess, no, I'm not laughing.
Okay, all right, we have these discussions all the time, so, back and forth. I, I talk too fast. Um, number fifty-three, developers agreement for Hinner Springs.
Move to approve the developer agreement?
Would you like to name the conditions?
Um, at, the conditions as presented. That's, that's a.
Also seconded.
Uh, motion to, uh, approve the developers agreement for Hinner Springs as presented, seconded by White. Anything on the discussion?
Um, is, staff has any comment on that? Yeah, Keith, everything is okay, and you guys like it, then.
Uh, this was by the developer, the only, there was a couple of comments.
I thought, I didn't.
Minor, I don't know if that they.
Yeah.
Uh, what have been bringing up, one was, since we're using, or there's a proposal, use plastic, that there not be a requirement to pull a mandrel. That's something that we pulled through to test for the, uh, the roundness of the pipes, so on the storm sewer, we found out that doesn't really work very well, trying to pull a mandrel. Um, so that, that was, that was a discovery on Misty Pines, I guess I don't have a problem taking that out. That would be, that would be an additional regulation, each on there, the other. I'm gonna comment about this not needing to be reviewed by a Rip Mountain Metro, that's some language that's been, um, it's been in these agreements forever, and in this case, it wasn't necessary.
So if you pull that one, the mandrel out, how are they gonna test? Not to test it at all?
It'd be a lamp test, where you can, you can look down the pipe and make sure it's clear and.
But it's good to do, Steve is gonna do the camera.
And the camera, right, that would be the other thing, you would teleport it to him.
What was that?
Let me find the, um, I didn't do these as being significant.
It's a long time silent.
Yeah, I'm trying to find.
It's a long time, that puts a lot of pressure on you, doesn't it?
It's hard on you.
Yeah, no, no, for me, oh, no, no, it wasn't on me, it was on him, but I just want everyone to realize that we went about ten seconds. So, my wife would, my wife would be really impressed. She usually says.
Okay, here we go. If, oh, okay, I'm sorry, it was the other, I had it flipped, Kushein.
Yeah.
We have concrete pipe as this, as the storm sewer material.
Yeah.
No mandrel.
Oh, okay.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And if, uh, for the water main plant, there's no approval by our, must be our Marathon County, oh, again, those are linear things we can strike, but that would be, the first item's on page four, section one point zero two, paragraph four.
Yep.
Second item's on page eight, section one point oh seven, paragraph one. That's the water main.
Are we good?
So with those.
And the sidewalk gonna stay, right?
Sidewalk is staying right now.
Yes. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. So carry, number fifty-four, discussion and possible action on holding special meetings the first Monday of the month when staff has someone waiting to appeal the denial of their alcohol license.
I put this on.
Sure?
And looking for your thoughts on it. I know that, you know, we've had some of these people come to other meetings, and I know that one meeting, it lasted an hour. We had those three hearings.
Mm-hmm.
And I know in some cases, you know, I think, I tend to feel a little awkward, I, I. I, I, Keith kind of both talked about how sometimes we feel a little awkward with having all these other items on the agenda and all these other people out in the audience, and these people are talking about, you know, their personal life experiences. I just wanted to throw it out there and get your thoughts on it.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
I just have a question here, we would only do that, and we would only hold that special meeting if there is individuals coming to ask for, uh, an appeal.
Right.
Yes, right.
And it just so happens that I, I do have one coming up.
Oh.
Um, yes.
Well, I got a problem, if the chief police saying, hey, is it illegal what he has done, and he shouldn't done it, and he been in the jail this and that, why the appeal, I don't understand that.
Well, there, there are times, and I don't, I don't mean to speak for you, but there are times that you're gonna, you're gonna stay in your lane, and that's what you recommend. And the board, as of the last year, has not followed suggestions all the time.
I'm just following the ordinance.
I know you are, I know, so.
Can I make a couple comments? I would be opposed to this, having enough evening meetings, so to come for another meeting would, I wouldn't want to, because I don't wanna sit through another meeting. The other comment I have is we do have these appeals, and I, I kind of wonder that our staff does, I can't imagine the number of hours they put into these for our area with the backgrounds. And then we do get some that, you know, should be denied, I recommend a denial. We have the hearing, and especially in Schofield, and most of the time in Weston, you give it to them anyways. I'm kind of wondering what, why we're doing all this. And it, it's a lot of time. A lot of time.
And, and, excuse me, please, the other thing is, if our ordinance is saying, hey, you can't do that, why we go against ordinance? I understand it is, it's prerogative of the board, we can change ordinance, we can do this. We gotta follow some instruction or some.
Well, they recently did change the laws, and so the board, you do now need to consider rehabilitation. So, that, that is a whole new avenue that you're dealing with, that you never had to deal with before. So, but, I'm gonna throw something else out there. Remember that ordinance, that ordinance that you approved at the last meeting, pending legal review?
Yeah.
Well, we sent that off to the attorney, and he actually has a whole new recommendation with that. He thinks we need to take those guidelines out of the, out of the ordinance, take them out completely, have a handbook for Clay or, or your staff there or whoever, and any, any recommendations that you have for denial would be sent to him to review. And then, then come to the board or, or whatever you wanna do with it, but, I didn't put it on this time, I, I wasn't sure we were quite ready for it, but now that we're having this discussion, I thought we might as well bring it up.
I, I just wanted to do a point of order, I think we're getting off track here as well, specifically because we're talking about having that meeting, we're not talking specifically about the process as well, that's how I interpret it, but.
I agree.
With this, the reason I said that, because I guess the meeting, if we have all this regulation and all this, why we have a meeting?
I think it's.
I think.
Because of these law changes that we're trying to contend with in terms of making.
Well, if we have a handbook, does it even need to go to the police department?
Well, that was part of the, probably the discussion, what we wanna do, we can have attorney Eady come and talk to the board about this.
How you gonna know their background?
What?
We gotta do their background.
Yeah, it's, yeah, he can get at stuff we can't get at, I mean, the police department can get at stuff that nobody else can get at, Barb?
I guess that was, I mean, myself, I, I could care less if I had a meeting on Monday, another Monday night to come in for a half hour, hour. But now you're talking, please, because I sure would want the chief to be here, you know, and I'm thinking, now that's an extra meeting, and I would rather try to see if, I don't know if we could hold, have it, say, a little before the meeting. I mean, the, 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 the meeting was that particular one that we were here till eleven o'clock, thank you, Mike, Mark.
Yeah, you're welcome, yeah, my wife wants to come up either, so, trust me.
But that was not just that, I mean, it added to it, but that, that agenda was, I guess I would have preferred to have something with that big, if we could have taken some of those things on that agenda and had had it.
I, I'm misunderstanding the, 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 the ask. So, I thought the ask was about getting them back to work and they wouldn't have to wait a whole month. The ask is actually about the awkwardness of it, and being in public.
The appeals.
Yeah, I have, I have no issue that it's with another meeting. I thought it was about, you know, possibly getting them back to work, you know, so if it's about the publicness of it is, that's where it is.
It's public.
It's a public meeting, yeah.
I thought the same thing you.
Yeah, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, so, I, I would then be opposed if we're doing it because it's a sensitive nature. It's public.
It's, it's an open.
They're, 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 they're serving the public, I mean, it's, this is what it is.
And it's part of a regular gender or special meeting, the public is entitled to be.
If it's, if it's not about getting them back to work quicker, then, okay, so the third is, this is our meeting night the third, and I, I, I interpreted this being that, why should they have to wait a whole nother month if they're gonna do an appeal? But if it's about the sensitivity, no, then I, I would rather not do the meeting, right? Special meeting, I'm sorry, but that's just where I am. Special meeting or regular meeting, it's all open record, yeah, it really falls on us more than anybody else ever thought, so.
Staff was not suggesting that we would close the whole session.
Oh, no, it can't be, right, yeah, it can't be.
It's next week. Oh, that.
Yep.
Uh, I move, uh, I move to deny, uh, holding special meetings for, uh, for appeal of denials. Uh, motion by Feeny.
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Ermeling, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Um, any attorney referrals? Anybody, this is kind of what we put on here, that takes something, attorney, so that we all agree. Uh, hearing none, there is none. And now I'm looking for a motion, or wait, and we need to move to close session to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility administrator evaluation. Uh, I move to enter into closed session under statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent C, in order to discuss the performance evaluation over any public employee which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Any other state, right?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Ermeling. Uh, roll call vote?
Ermeling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Hey.
Thank you. I don't need a camera.
We are back in open session, and remarks from trustees, Lauren?
I have nothing.
Uh, Ermeling?
Well, I guess, I just happen to think, should I, of course, it's too late now, abstain from voting when it went past my street?
Yes.
You don't have any.
No.
Interested in.
I don't think so, no, no one.
Just.
Oh, okay, because other than complaints from the neighbors, okay.
More than just you.
Okay.
No, but I have, um, I have direct family relations. Okay, okay, so no, uh, Yi?
Yes, so, uh, next week is the Mong Wassa Festival, and we have.
When you stole my stuff, I have my notes.
If any of you are available, please do join us, uh, it is the forty-fifth anniversary of the first Mong family to arrive in the wa- Ameritan County.
That long ago already.
It has been, um, so, uh, we, we have our grand opening ceremony at nine AM. Uh, if anybody's planning coming, come through the north entrance and get there right around eight forty-five, eight forty approximately, and then, um, join us for the opening ceremony, we'll provide free food for people, for all the VIP and elected officials, so please do come and join us on that day there. Governor Tony Evers is gonna be there as well too, along with Maser Ta, who's the first Asian American individual to be appointed to, um, the inner circle of the governor's office as well too, so she'll be the keynote speaker as well, along with many other individuals, um, our president Maloney will be there as well too, as a speaker as well, so, if anybody is available, please, um, do come and join us, um, it'll be, but we're expecting record-breaking numbers, let me just put that one here.
Good, sounds exciting. No rain?
Hopefully, hopefully.
I'm trying, I'm getting, trying to convince my sister for it, please.
Oh, okay.
Shink?
Shall we, shall I ask Kenny tomorrow to look at the, the building and do some, give us some idea?
Oh, Cooney, yeah, definitely, well, I just wanna make sure that something's happening, you know, but.
Then, then we should ask him and.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, we'll be the builder.
Right, we'll ask him in the morning, we have an eight o'clock meeting with them, and then.
Husheng does, right?
Well, he's.
Yep.
If you compare a project, a weekly project meeting, yeah.
Red doors, red doors, okay, red doors.
What, what, ask him, let, give us idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Red doors, uh, names.
Sounds like Red Rome, you remember that?
Red Rome, Red Rome. Jack Nicholson. The Shiny.
Uh, tomorrow is game six of the NBA Finals, I know everyone's pulling for the Bucks, Wisconsin needs a championship. Also, see you at the Mong Wassa Festival.
Since nineteen seventy-four, right?
Seventy-one.
Oh, seventy-one, okay. Uh, I just wanna say something, uh, I wanted to just talk, uh, just a remark about the wire, I thought the wire was very good. I thought it was very positive. I, I liked the inclusion of SAFER, and I, I wished the police was in there too. But, uh, let's, and it's kind of, it's not really, um, scheduled, so it's kind of, kind of come haphazardly, but I, I thought that was very well done. Right, phones. Nope, that's it, that's all I got.
Blue Tudger.
Blue Tudger, by Feeny.
Suck.
Second by Husheng, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, twenty after eight, not bad.